Good evening. Welcome to the special meeting of the Livonia Public Schools Board of Education, September 10th, 2015. This meeting was posted as a 6:15 meeting, however, in our interviews last night, at the end of the interviews, I stated that this evening's meeting will be beginning at 6:30. Because I made that erroneous time listing, I'm going to recess our meeting for 15 minutes and we will begin at 6:30 so that we don't miss any audience members who wanted to follow along but who may have gotten the wrong information. We are now at recess. We will reconvene at 6:30. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Again, it's a pleasure to be with you. As we look at the next steps in the superintendent selection process, I guess I want to take a step back and just kind of review where we've been and some of the commitments that you made and that we made along the way. You recall when we first started this process and you interviewed our firm to assist you with it, we said to you, we thought that there were two things that you should consider. One would be to post the position immediately, receive applications, take a look at those people, and make a determination if there was the right person within that group, hire them. If not, step back and come back later in the fall, early winter, and repost and look again at that point. We'd posted the position. We had 27 people file timely applications, a couple of whom withdrew along the way, but still 25 viable applicants. We narrowed the field down to five. One of those five subsequently withdrew, and so you proceeded over the last two evenings and interviewed four candidates for the position of superintendent. So, we're at a fork in the road. We have two directions that we can go. One is to answer that threshold question. Is there a candidate amongst those four that you've interviewed that you believe is worthy to continue to pursue? Again, it's a process, not an event, and so the question really is, is there one or more candidates within that group of four that the board would like to engage and have more discussion with about the position? If so, then we would move forward and schedule another opportunity for that candidate to come and spend some time with the board one day next week. If not, then we would say thank you very much to those who expressed their interest at the beginning and go back and repost the position as we get into late fall, early winter. If it's that direction that we move in, we would want to begin ourselves and would encourage you as a board to begin to talk to people in the educational environment that you think might be good fits for this position and see if we can inspire some additional interest in the position. Again, you'll recall that at the start of the school year, like we are right now, it's difficult to convince a lot of sitting superintendents to walk away from their current districts. However, when we get into that January through March peak period for superintendent searches, sitting supers are much more willing to take a look at that, and that would be the gamble that we would be taking, that we would be able to attract some. People with some experience sitting in the superintendent's chair who would express interest in this particular superintendent's position. So, the question is really up to you as a board, and I guess I would just suggest that you kind of throw it open in terms of a discussion about, do we have somebody that we want to pursue further and at least investigate, understanding that there's no commitment to hire anybody, but do we want to talk more and learn more about one or more of these candidates? And if so, how should we proceed? And if not, then let's move forward and begin to talk about how we proceed from this point forward with a view towards reposting sometime December, early January. So, let me just say, you know, this is a chance for you to talk to one another about your perceptions and your thoughts and your concerns and what you would like to see happen.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
Thank you, President Burton. I do have one candidate that I find that I'd like to get to know better. I'd like to give that one candidate a second interview, maybe something that's a little less formal, more of a get-to-know-you to determine personality and continue to determine if they're a good fit with the district, but I would certainly like to, I would like to pursue at least one more interview before we make a determination that we're going to repost.
Other thoughts? Mrs. Laura.
Well, I value that thought that Mrs. Bonnefield has just expressed, and seeing that all four candidates are very knowledgeable, experienced, and they all have certain areas, individual areas of expertise. I don't think that there, any one is meeting our high standard that we have set. We got a lot of input from our staff, our students, our parents, our community. We've set some pretty high standards, and I'm hoping that we fill those standards, and I don't think that we're doing that right now, and I agree with Mr. Wilmot. It's all in the timing, and possibly this isn't the right time, and I would like to just put this at a halt and move on later in the school year.
President Burton.
Mrs. McDonald. Thank you. I concur with Mrs. Laura that I think maybe we need to look further, and not to say that any of the candidates that we already had discussion with couldn't reapply. I would like for them to reapply, but I would also like to see what else is out there and see if we can't find a candidate that meets the expectations of this community, this board, and the staff, and especially the children, because they were the most important. And I think timing is everything, and it's an important decision for us and for our community, and I think it's something that we need to make sure that we're doing a hundred and ten percent, not a hundred percent. So, that's my thought on this.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. First of all, I want to thank all of the applicants, all twenty-seven of them, because if someone were able to look at the applications themselves, it wasn't an easy task to even fill those out. So, we appreciate all of them. In terms of the four that we interviewed, each one of them brings something unique to the table, something that personally I think we're all looking for. But as I said last evening, we've gotten spoiled because of what we had. And I do think that there's one candidate that I think warrants a closer look. I don't know whether this is really the time to do it, and what I'm afraid of is that, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to settle for a candidate simply because it's one of the four that we interviewed if that person isn't the perfect fit that we want. So, at this point, those are my feelings, and I'm just not sure that I want to go forward at this particular point with additional interviews, although I think there's, one candidate does merit a closer look.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. I concur with my colleagues. I think that there was one candidate I would consider looking at again, but I did not get the impression that any one of the candidates, despite their merits and their experience, was a perfect fit for our needs. I can see some of them being very, very strong candidates in a district who perhaps had some more major problems than what we have or needed more direction, but we're a very established district, and we don't need fixing and we don't need guidance. We just need a really great superintendent, and I believe that person exists. I don't mind hiring somebody that we would need to train in our established ways, but I don't want to have to untrain anyone either, and I think that if we can find somebody that can basically hit the ground running, and I didn't get that impression with any of our candidates, despite their great experience.
Mr. Centers.
I'm going to agree that there is one candidate that I was interested in learning a little bit more about, whether that person is a correct fit. Again, I think the qualifications of the candidates were strong. Expectations of having some twelve-year superintendent, regional superintendent of the year walk in the door, well, is just not realistic. That's something that someone develops into over time on the job. There's one person that I think may have that potential. Whether or not we, you know, that person, we interview that person right now, that's something I think we can discuss.
Mrs. Bonnefield.
I'm going to go back to, I really think that we need to give this one candidate a second interview, and potentially next week is what we had originally talked about scheduling. I don't think that by interviewing them a second time, we're settling. I think that we had a ninety-minute interview with boilerplate questions that we asked every single candidate. I don't think that there was much of an opportunity to get to know the personality or how they are going to fit, and to make that judgment call based on the last two nights' interviews, I think is a little bit preemptive. I think we, I think what Mr. Centers said, you know, about, you know, it's going to be hard to fill Dr. Leepa's shoes, and I agree we've set the bar high, but is our ego guide away from us? Are we setting the bar just so high that we're not going to get someone that, you know, are we never going to be satisfied? I don't think just talking to this person on a second interview to determine, you know, if maybe they do fit, maybe we have a superstar. We have to remember, we, and it was brought to my attention that Dr. Leepa was in the district for many years before he became superintendent, but we, sorry, I shouldn't be going down. At any rate, I just, I feel very strongly that we're doing a disservice to the district by throwing our hands up right now and saying, we think that there's something better out there before we know what we have sitting in front of us. And, you know what, next, so three things are going to happen. One, we're going to interview the person, and we're going to decide that we want to continue to interview that person. Two, we can decide that they are not a good fit for the district and cut them loose and give everybody a little bit of relief instead of dragging this out for another six to nine months, or we can sit at the table next week and make this same decision to repost the position and ask this person to hopefully continue on with us. Personally, if it was me, I don't know if I would continue on, and I hate to lose that opportunity without giving that person the chance to provide us with a real look at who they are and what they have to offer.
I'm going to jump in, because everyone's had one shot at it, and then I will continue, no, 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 and then I will continue on with entertaining comments from everybody until we've exhausted them all. My opinion is, there is one candidate that I am interested in having a second interview with. However, I really want to have a second interview with more than just one individual. I would like to have an interview with the one candidate that I'm interested in, but when we are looking at a broader pool, so that we can have a second interview with a few candidates, so we can truly have a learning about the individual, but comparing one against another, so we can see what we have. All four candidates were very qualified in very different ways, and I thank them for their time and effort, and I think each one would bring different qualifications to the job. That being said, I'm looking to see who fits with Livonia Public Schools, and in my opinion, there's one who might fit. But as a school board member, I don't want to make my choice out of a pool of just one. I would like to make my choice out of a pool of more than one that I believe could fit well into the position. And for that reason, I am interested in giving a second interview to one of the individuals, but I would very much like to do so after we have gone out and expanded our pool and perhaps looked at what's a more traditional time for doing a superintendent search. I don't blame us for doing our first search right now, because you take what life gives you at the time that it presents itself, and we had a superintendent opening that we needed to jump on. But seeing that we may get a deeper pool of candidates if we take a second dive into that arena, if we look at it again in, say, January or so, the more traditional superintendent search time, I'm very interested in having this candidate who I have in mind come back for a second interview, but I would like to do it when I can fairly compare that individual against others who I feel also have similar level of qualifications and fit in our district. So, for that reason, I would like to see us extend our wishes to the individual if we're thinking of the same individual, and I don't know that yet, but if we are all looking at the same one individual, then I would hope that that individual would come back, would allow that, would allow him or herself to be considered a candidate still, but basically put that process on hold and come back for interview time when we are looking at more than one candidate at that time. Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you, President Burton. What you're saying makes sense. In this entire process, timing has been our biggest problem. It's a non-conventional time to try and hire a superintendent, and I believe that there may be very strong viable candidates out there who simply were not able to apply for the position because of the timing. They were already locked into a position elsewhere or for whatever reason. The more traditional time would probably be a great benefit to us. At the same time, I hear what Mrs. Bonnefield's saying, there is definitely a candidate I'd like to get to know better, but I think that there, the other side of the coin that you mentioned, you know, you talk about having this person available right away, but the other side of the coin is the people who simply were not available because of the timing, and I don't want to lose those either.
Mrs. Laurel.
I think President Burton's suggestion is a nice compromise between our suggestions for those that want to give a second, if it's a certain individual, and we have a unanimous agree, not unanimous, but we have an agreement amongst four that they'd like to interview for a second time, then I think agreeing with President Burton that we should wait when, as everyone is saying and knows, is a more beneficial time for us to interview. So, I agree with what you say.
Mrs. McConnell. Thank you, President Burton. I too do have a candidate that I would like to learn more about. However, I guess because of our thought process, maybe Mr. Wilmot can give us some guidance on this as to, because number one, we don't want to insult anybody, we don't, it's, you know, these people put a lot of work into interviewing and putting themselves out there for us and for our community, because they really, really want to work here. And, you know, I mean, it's a huge testament that these people did tremendous amount of work in, to put themselves here, but we don't want to insult them, we want to welcome them, and maybe you can give us some guidance as maybe what we should do.
So, you know, you look at a pool of candidates, and clearly, these are people who have put themselves out there publicly, expressing their interest in the school community, and that must be appreciated and respected along the way. That being said, this is the most important decision you're going to ever make as a board of education, is the selection of your next leader, and there can be nothing that takes higher priority, other than your personal integrity and reputations along the way. And I think you've been very straightforward with all of the candidates and have given them an opportunity to impress you. Remember that this is a process, and it's a multi-step process, and that as you go through processes, your thoughts and reactions might change. I do think that the suggestion that Mrs. Burton has offered is a reasonable suggestion, and that individual candidate, if it turns out to be the same one that you're all referencing, you know, we would want to communicate with that person right away and indicate that this is not a situation where the board's saying, you know, thanks but no thanks, but rather, thanks, we'd like to have some more dialogue, but perhaps a little bit later point in time when we've had a chance to get a little bit better handle on who else is out there and be able to do a real comparison, because the other remaining candidates aren't people that we see as a fit for us at this particular point in time. What the reaction of that individual would be, I don't know. I mean, until you actually speak to them, there's no way of knowing. The risk is, you might lose that person. The potential gain is that not only might that person say, yeah, I would remain interested, but you might have some other people who would be interested as well that could give you another comparative look at the candidates that you have. And again, I think it's important that as you, if you determine to, you know, go back and repost, you know, early winter, late fall, or whatever, that remaining time be used, not just to tread water, not just to sit here and do nothing, but to rather really begin to reach out and try to get to know as much as we can about some of these other people. And perhaps it, perhaps it takes the form of a couple of members of the board working with Bill and I to schedule some informal sessions with some of these people, just to kind of get to know who they are as a person and be better positioned to provide some input to you as a board as to how the fit is seen. I think the technical skills are there in all those people, but it's more than just the technical skills. It's about the right fit to lead the organization. And I know that, you know, people have talked about the successes that your prior superintendent had, and clearly, those are well documented, but, you know, if you go back and look at some of the research done on leadership by people like Dr. Warren Benis out at the University of Southern California. Benis and his staff did a research project to look at the CEOs of Fortune 500 corporations, and their premise was that there's a particular skill set that if they could identify, that they could predict who would be successful in leadership roles of those big corporations. And point of fact, what they found is that there is no silver thread, that it's individual differences, and you can have people that are diametrically opposed to one another in terms of their personal characteristics and the way they go about doing business, and be equally successful. So, it's really a matter of you as a board, on behalf of your community, being able to look at candidates and be able to say, okay, so if they have the technical skills, what's the right fit for us, and how does that look? How does it manifest itself? And it probably will take more time than a ninety-minute interview to be able to do that. Does that help?
Okay. Mrs. Laurel.
Thank you. I just wanted to add also that if we are in agreement to extend our search, that I believe we all feel confident that we're in good hands, and we have someone that knows the district is doing an excellent job, very capable and committed, and will, is also willing, if I may say so, to continue on for a little bit longer, so.
Mrs. McConnell and Mr. Johnson.
Okay, thank you. One thing I do think I learned from last evening's interview was, one of the questions to us is extended from the candidate, what did the board want to see from their next superintendent, and what did they foresee the future to be? And I don't think any of us readily had that. I didn't. I didn't have an answer to that, and I think it's something that we collectively need to sit down and really, really hone in on what we want to see, how we want to see it happen, so we can kind of collectively know when the right candidate, whoever it may be, for somebody from last night or somebody in the future, so we know what, you know, what we exactly want and what we think is best for our community and how we're going to know to recognize it.
Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, President Burton. I think Dr. Wilmot sort of hit on my thinking. It's really, at this point, a risk analysis. The risk is if we don't proceed with a second interview for a particular individual, and we shut the process down and move forward a number of months, the risk is we may lose that candidate. On the other side of the coin, the risk is that are we going to secure perhaps a different pool of candidates, a more, I'll just use the term "fittable" candidate? The risk is we may not, and we may lose the candidate that we already have. So that's the analysis I'm going through in my mind, and what's the greater risk to the board? And I'm still having some trouble ferreting that out at this particular instance.
I'd like to make one clarification to Mrs. McDonald with the concept that you threw out about what we're looking for. It does need to be recognized and known that we went through an extensive profile.
Oh, we did.
And not only did the board go through that profile and have extensive conversation one-on-one with MLI, but we also took that profile search out to many different focus groups of our stakeholders. And that was put together along with the Talk to Us button, so folks could either approach individual board members or go through the Talk to Us button online. And we've got well over 100 or so additional comments on there. And we do have a solid profile for what we're looking for. It's a matter of seeing it when that individual is in front of us. We do know what we're looking for. And I want to be clear with the public for myself, I got over looking for another Randy Leopha a long time ago because you couldn't duplicate any one of us, nor are we going to duplicate Dr. Leopha. However, there are certain characteristics that are very, very important to me that a superintendent have. Some of those are quantifiable qualifications, and some of them are intangible personality traits. Those things are not necessarily a duplicate of Dr. Leopha, but those things are very important to me. And I think each one of us has some of those that are personally higher than others. And collectively, our community has put that together in our profile document. So we do know what we're looking for. It's a matter of seeing those qualifications in the right person. Mr. Centers.
I would happily support your proposal that we extend the search in hopes that this one individual, if, again, we're talking about the same people, person, would apply again, go through the process. But I'm willing to, you know, give it another shot and, you know, really make a commitment to take our time and due diligence for this. Again, if that's the way the rest of the board wants to go, I'm totally in support of that.
The only addition that I would make to that, for my own opinion, and I'm one of seven, if the individual that I'm thinking of, if it's the same individual that the majority of our board is thinking of, I would not feel the need for that individual to apply again. My opinion truly is that I'm interested in a second interview for that individual. The application has already been done, the first interview has already been done. I'm interested in a second interview with that individual, but I would like for it to take place when we can have second interviews with others also. So for myself, I don't even feel the need for another application process or another first interview. That work has been done. I'm satisfied to put that person forward for a second at the time that we're doing second interviews.
That's reasonable, and I'm willing to take the risk.
You have two.
Me too.
Mrs. Bonifield.
I'm sorry, and I will back the board 100% if I am the only one. I truly think that we're making a mistake by not giving this person a second interview. And I hear, and if it's not what everybody is saying, but I'm hearing that if we grant the second interview, that somehow we're settling or we're magically going to hire this person after the second interview, or that we can't post after the second interview. All I'm saying is that I think that we need to give this person an opportunity to shine and let us know what their personality is so that we can determine, possibly after a second or third interview, we may determine that we want to do a site visit, or we may come back to the table and say, no, we'd really like to move on. And we talk about comparing, comparison, and in a certain, I agree with that, but I also think there is a chance that either this person is going to fit or they're not going to fit. No matter how many people, we could put 20 up against, and then I think that we're settling when we do that then. Because if we have five people that we're interviewing, do we just settle for the one that we like the most? Or do we wait and find the one that we think is going to be the best fit? I think either the individual is going to fit or they're not going to fit. It doesn't matter how many people we interview. And I think there's also a timeframe that we interview this person and, you know, we may decide that they're a superstar, and this is what we need for our district, but we can't do that. So then, we're going to wait six or nine months to re-interview and reapply and go through all that. And then we could very possibly hire this person. And then we've been treading water for nine months when we could have been getting on with it and getting work done. Again, I'm not all about hiring this person. All I'm saying is that I think we need to really determine in a real face-to-face conversation and ask the tough questions, not the questions we asked the last two nights, the boilerplate questions. Really say, here's our concern, this is what we need to know from you. And maybe they have good answers, or maybe they don't have good answers. But I don't think there's any risk in giving this person a second interview next week. I think the risk is that we're going to lose, that we could possibly lose this person, and it could be a mistake. If we interview them and we decide to go ahead and repost, then we're no further behind. Because we're not going to repost tomorrow, we've already said that. We're not going to repost in a month, it's not like we're putting the process behind a week. All we're saying is that we want to get to know this person a little bit better. That being said, I feel very strongly about this. I absolutely will back the board 100% on whatever decision that we make tonight. I am, like you always say, I'm one of seven. So if we decide not to grant the second interview and we go ahead and repost, I will work as diligently as possible to make that happen. I just really need to make sure that everybody understands, and I know you're all listening. Stop talking.
Mrs. Jarvis.
Thank you. What I hear Mrs. Bonifield saying, and I may not be hearing it correctly, is that what we're looking at is the possibility of inviting someone back for a second interview and the other possibility of having round two of first interviews for candidates as yet unknown. So which do we do first? Do we have this individual, invite the individual for a round two or for a second interview, or do we have the second round of first interviews first? And it probably doesn't make a whole lot of difference to us because either way, we'll look at everybody. But it might make difference to this candidate. And I think that it would be polite to not string a person along, and it would be polite to not say, you know, we really thought you had a lot of interest, as long as we don't find somebody else who's better. That just seems rude. Whereas if we were to give a person a second interview now, we would know whether we wanted to say, you know, your second interview was really great, we have a couple other irons in the fire. Are you willing to wait till we investigate those? Or if the second interview totally flops and we determine that this person is probably not a good fit, we'll know that going into the second phase of round one interviews. Do you see what I'm saying?
I see what you're saying. Mrs. McDonald.
Thank you. I agree with Mrs. Bonifield in thinking that, number one, if that was me, I would not want to be just out there in the open and having such a long time of not knowing where I stand. And for us, it's just a matter of a few hours of our time, which, you know, I'm okay with that. And I think it would do any candidate, you know, justice of knowing where they stand. And I guess it would be good for us to get to know this individual, whoever it may be. You know, I guess we have nothing to lose by trying, I mean, we might have everything to gain, I guess. You know, and that's always the other flip side of it, too.
Can I make one more?
You may.
Sorry. So here's another part of that thought process is if we do the second interview with this person and they're not a fit, and we say thank you very much, but it's not going to work, I think that also clears the playing field for the next group of candidates. And we get that out of the way. And then the new pool of candidates from reposting are, they're not going to feel like, well, there's already a player in the game, a strong player in the game. So another benefit of doing the second interview next week is if we do cut this person loose, then we have a clean slate for whoever is going to possibly apply. And we know that there's probably some people out there that didn't apply because they thought maybe there was, you know, too many good candidates in the mix, and they just didn't want to put themselves out there. So if the playing field is clear, that could benefit us in different people applying as well.
I see it. I hear what you're saying about, at what point are we stringing someone along? Are we stringing them along by asking them to hold right now, we're going to do second interviews a few months down the road? Or are we going to do a second interview next week and then ask them to hold, we're going to do second interviews a few months down the road? For myself, I think it's cleaner, I mean, I think it sticks one habit as another in terms of their comfort level should they go on to the next level. I think it might make it even more difficult for our board to attract quality candidates if someone's gone through two rounds of interviews and then we're looking for other candidates while we still keep that individual on the table. I think that would be definitely detrimental to our own board and our own district. Interviewing is an uncomfortable situation. Interviewing in public is an even more uncomfortable situation. And I give folks a lot of credit who want to do that. But our responsibility right now is to get the best superintendent that we can for this district. And in order to do that, I want to be able to attract the best candidates, with an S on the end, to our district. So we can choose among a group of folks the best choice that we can, because it's not going to be only one choice that would be able to do a good job or one choice that would do a poor job. But I want to be able to have the best group of people that we can together in order to weigh out their strengths and choose what we believe is the best choice for our district to go forward. We are very fortunate to have, as it's been stated, an interim superintendent who has agreed to give us that time. I think no matter what way we cut it with an individual who may have gone through a first interview at this point, and we may be interested in potentially seeing in the future, no matter what way we cut that, it's going to be an awkward wait. No matter what way we cut it, they may or may not choose to wait. But I feel the need to make sure that we have the best candidate pool possible, and I feel the need to take another dive into that pool. Mrs. Jarvis.
Is there the possibility of asking the candidate what their preference would be? Whether they would prefer to have a second interview now and then wait, explaining our situation, because these, we're all adults? Or if the candidate would prefer to wait and be with the pool of any additional applicants?
Mr. Wilmot.
I would just suggest to you that in my experience base, I don't think you could interview a candidate in a second round next week and then say, well, now we want you to wait a couple of months. I think that candidate is gone. You either make a decision to move forward or you cut bait, one or the other. I think your option of saying, we want to do the second interview, but we want to do it later, is one that might be viable, but I don't think it's viable to say, let's do that second interview and then wait a couple of months and interview some other people.
Mrs. Laura.
Thank you. Are we even, are we putting the cart before the horse right now? I'm not sure we even know if we're speaking of the same, if we have the majority of the board that's speaking of one same individual.
We can answer that question really quick. We can proceed with the process that we've talked about in the past. I'll poll you individually. You tell me yes, I'm going to stop right there, that you're interested in continuing to pursue somebody. If you tell me no, I'm going to go on to each successive board member until all seven of you have told me no. If you're talking about the same candidate, there'll be 21 noes cast and perhaps one yes after that. So if you're okay with that and want to clarify that we're talking about a specific individual, we can do that really rapidly. I'll poll you on the basis in the sequence in which they interviewed for the position, and I'll simply ask you, are you interested in continuing to pursue their candidacy? Tell me yes, I stop. You tell me no, I'll go on until all seven of you have told me no. Do you want to proceed like that?
I'm willing to do that.
Except with our board.
Then, Mrs. Jarvis, let me begin with you. Would you like to continue to pursue the candidacy of Mr. Ronald Wilson?
No.
Mr. Centers, would you like to continue to consider Mr. Wilson?
No.
Miss Bonifield?
No.
Miss Burton?
Not at this time, no.
Miss Laura?
No.
Miss McDonald?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
So Mr. Wilson's name is out of consideration. The next candidate to interview was Michael Musseri. Mr. Centers, would you like to continue to pursue Mr. Musseri?
No.
Miss Bonifield?
No.
Miss Burton?
No.
Miss Laura?
No.
Miss McDonald?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
No.
Miss Jarvis?
No.
So we've taken two names off the board. The third candidate to interview was Dr. John Van Wagner. Miss Bonifield, would you like to continue to pursue his candidacy?
No.
Miss Burton?
No.
Miss Laura?
No.
Miss McDonald?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. And then, Miss Burton, let me ask you if you'd like to continue to pursue the candidacy of Sharon Irvine Hawkins?
Yes.
Thank you. So there are two yeses that are out there. Obviously, board members are not talking about the same candidate, and so it's a matter of you being able to share with one another the strengths that you saw between those two candidates, and then we can poll again and see if we still have two names on the board or whether we've got but one. Miss Laura?
Before we do that, should we make a decision if we want to stop right now? Maybe we have a majority of the board that wants to just stop right now and continue later on. So should we make that decision first?
That was the purpose of that threshold question, and it appeared that there was some diversity of thought within the board. But certainly, you can do that at any point along the way, whether you have a single candidate or two candidates that you want to move forward with. We don't know if there's multiples that support a candidate like Ms. Irvine Hawkins or a candidate that would pursue, or a majority of the board that would like to pursue Dr. Van Wagner. We don't know that.
If we have two names that we're discussing at this point, I think it would benefit the board to find out where we stand on those candidates, where we see the strengths are of those two individuals.
I agree.
So if we've gone down this road to this point, I believe that we need to express our thoughts on the strengths of individuals.
Would you like to begin with that, Madam President?
I would be happy to do so. The one individual that I believe is that I would like to see come back The one individual that I believe is, that I would like to see come back for a second interview is Sharon Irvine Hawkins. She has a career history that impresses me in terms of, she has the skill set, I believe, to come into the superintendent position. She does not have all of the areas that I would like to see. I would like to see a stronger finance background. But she has some very strong areas. And I think that she might be a good fit for our district. But I don't know for certain if she's going to be a good fit for our district. And I don't know that she would be the best fit for our district that we could have. For that reason, I'm interested in speaking with her a second time. But I, as I've said earlier, I'm interested in speaking to her a second, a second time along with other individuals that I, that this board deems to be qualified and potentially good fits for our district.
Anyone else?
Mr. Centers?
Sure. I, I too was interested in speaking with Ms. Irvine Hawkins. I was impressed with her variety of district experiences and knowledge. Being a building principal, she, she had better-than-expected experience with special ed. I thought she spoke very passionately about the special ed community. She had some really good experiences with low and high incident students. I felt that it was her experience as a classroom teacher, school board president, from a variety of different positions, give her a very nice, well-rounded experience. Again, I did have questions if it's, she's the right fit again. I'm sure her experiences may differ from a little bit of the experience that we have here in Livonia. But again, I, there were some things that stood out that I was very impressed with.
Mrs. Laura, would you like to add a question?
Thank you. I'm probably a minority here. As I said earlier, I didn't think any of the candidates met our needs or our fits for the whole picture that we're looking at. So I would be saying no to all the candidates. But I do want to say that Mrs. Irvine Hawkins, I felt had a great strength with professional learning communities and how she connected everything to that assessment and instruction and curriculum and so on. And that's near and dear to my heart. I was trained by Dr. De Four, who was the guru back then in professional learning communities. And that was one of my challenges in the building that I led. And it is very successful. So I think that's one of her great strengths. And because the state has mandated us to go in that direction, I think that would be one of her great areas of expertise.
Mr. Johnson?
Okay. I too favored Ms. Irvine Hawkins. I think Mr. Centers has said most of the same feelings that I had. I was most impressed with her background in both administration and curriculum. She had a very good blend of both. In addition, she was a bilingual teacher, which I think brings something a little unique from the other candidates. So those are just some things additionally that I saw. Again, I had a good feeling from her about fit, but it's not, I'm not throwing confetti. I guess that might be the best way to say it. I felt good, but I want to see more. I want to, I want to have more in-depth with her.
Anybody who's not shared their thoughts who would like to?
Mrs. McDonald, let her hear it first. I especially, well, I felt that Dr. Van Wagner was very professional, very knowledgeable. I liked his experiences of being a teacher and going into working for the Department of Education and all his background and experiences in that area, I thought would be truly beneficial for our school district, to have the connections that I know he has at the state level. And I felt his, his comment when he said he took a month to decide whether or not this was the right place to apply. And he did a lot of work, you know, went to all our buildings, came to our community before he even placed application. And to me, that just gave, gave me the wherewithal that he took a lot of thought into making sure that this was a good fit for him. Because it isn't just, you know, what's a good fit for us. It's also something that has to be a good fit for the individual applying. Because if they're not happy and if they have any one ounce of doubt that this is the place they want to be, you know, they need to know that, too, before they even step into, onto our soils. So for me, that was a lot of why I felt, for me, that he was the candidate that I felt outshone the ones that came for interviews.
Mrs. Bonnefield?
I favored Mrs. Irvine Hawkins. I think that she was a very strong candidate. I think that she is strong in some areas. And I would agree that she's probably weak in some areas. I think that Dr. Leopold has left us in a place where we have a solid foundation to bring in an individual that doesn't necessarily have to be proficient immediately in all areas. I think she's a very intelligent, wise, and a fast learner. I think she's had a lot of incredible experiences with dealing with difficult situations. And as much as we try to communicate with our district, we still have taken so much criticism for lack of transparency or lack of giving out information. And I think that that was one place that I thought that she could improve our district. And I think public relations as a superintendent's position is important. And on the surface, just from the short interview, I found, I felt that she could be an incredible communicator, understanding how to maybe overcome this community perception. And we have obviously struggled with that. We continue to struggle with that. So my choice is Mrs. Irvine Hawkins.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. I can say that Mrs. Laura would not have been a minority of one. I too would have given four no's. Because I think that while our candidates have some, some strengths and each has a unique skill set, I'm not sure that any of them are a good enough match for our needs. However, since it seems that we're looking at the possibility of two people, John Van Wagner and Sharon Irvine Hawkins, to invite back for a second interview, it seems the obvious choice is to invite them both back for a second interview so that we can get to know each of them better. And then we would be more equipped to say yes or no, yes or no, to either or both. It doesn't preclude the option of turning them both down and starting over.
Or the potential that one or both might say, "Thank you, but no thank you."
That's true, too.
Yeah, and I do have, it's, if only one person is currently looking to move on with one particular candidate, that we may be putting them through a motion of, you know, that's kind of futile. And, you know, I'm very sensitive about, again, you know, screening someone along again.
Would you like to give direction at this point? This is why we hired you to.
There's two options. I mean, you've each had a chance to speak and you each have a sense for the rest of where you sit. I can poll you again relative to those two individuals and see where you stand collectively at that point. Perhaps one or more have changed their mind in terms of how they want to support and decide whether you've got two people that are still on the table or whether there's only one. And then a decision needs to be made as to how you want to deal with that one. Whether you want to interview that person next week and make a determination either to move forward beyond that with that one person or to hold that person off and say, you know, "We'd like to offer that opportunity to you at a later point in time." And then that individual will need to decide the direction that they want to move into.
So just to be clear, are, you're saying, is a majority of the board in favor of bringing back each of the two candidates? And then if we have either one or both of the candidates, the next question would be, when is the board interested in bringing back either one or both candidates? So there's two sets of questions, as I understand it. Is that correct?
That's correct. I mean, the bottom line is, at some point, the majority of the board has to be willing to support whoever it is that's going to be offered the position. And at this point, I'm hearing at least four members of the board say, well, probably more than that, probably six members of the board saying, "I don't have interest in one of those two." And so it becomes a question as to what's the potential that that would change through a second interview? Maybe it would, maybe it wouldn't. You need to make that determination. But I think that's the reality that we face. And then I think the other option is to say, well, there is another candidate that at least four members of the board have said they'd have some interest in talking to further. Obviously, when it's all said and done, it's going to take the majority of the board to make a decision one way or the other on any of these people. So my thought would be to say, let me poll once again and see where we are with each of those two. And is there still a split on the board? And if so, then it would seem like it would be incumbent upon the board to, somebody to offer a motion to proceed one way or the other with one or both and see where the majority of the board falls with it. You all right with that?
Yes, just so you're, so that we're clear. So you're going to poll, 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 poll the board and see if each member is interested in going on with Mr. Van Wagner? And then you will poll the board and see if each member is interested in going on with Ms. Irvine Hawkins?
Yes.
So those are the first two questions that will be asked.
Those are the first two questions to ask. You okay with that?
Is everyone all right with that?
Yes. So, Ms. Laura, let me begin with you. Would you like to continue to pursue the candidacy of Dr. John Van Wagner?
No.
Thank you. Ms. McDonald, would you like to continue to pursue the candidacy of Dr. John Van Wagner?
Um, no.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you like to continue to pursue the candidacy of Dr. John Van Wagner?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Jarvis, would you like to continue to pursue Dr. Van Wagner?
No.
Mr. Centers?
No.
Ms. Bonnefield?
Thank you, no.
Thank you. So we have seven no's. So we're down to Ms. Irvine Hawkins. And so let me begin with you. Ms. McDonald, would you like to continue to pursue Ms. Irvine Hawkins?
Uh, no.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, would you like to continue to pursue Ms. Irvine Hawkins?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to stop right there. We've got the one yes that we needed to be able to continue to pursue that candidate. What we need to determine now is when and in what format. My suggestion to you would be, no matter which decision you make in terms of when, next week or at a later point in time, that the understanding be that we would not proceed with a full-blown series of community forums at that first step until we get to a later point in time. If you're going to proceed with just that one interview to determine whether you want to move forward, then I would suggest you do that next week and then determine the week after to invite those people back in, those are your stakeholder groups. Mr. Jarvis?
Excuse me, I'm compelled to interrupt. When we did the voting on Mr. Van Wagner, I don't recall hearing President Burton vote. We started with Mrs. Laura, and I think we stopped with Mrs. Bonnefield.
You're, you're right. That was my error. I'm sorry.
We had to pick on several rounds on different things. I didn't know that myself. Thank you.
So let me ask you, do you want to continue to pursue Dr. Van Wagner?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Good catch, though, thank you.
Thank you for that. Preferences in terms of Ms. Irvine Hawkins next week or at a later point in time? Mr. Centers?
I would like to hear a recommendation from you, just because we brought you in to be the expert in this area.
My advice would be that you, if you, if you believe that there is some significant potential that you might want to proceed with her, that you do it in a timely manner. And quite frankly, I'm not sure that it changes the risk substantially one way or the other. I think Ms. Bonnefield has a point that if you have somebody hanging out there, it might diminish future interest in the position. On the other hand, I think there's credibility in Ms. Burton's point as well, that if you look at that one person by themselves without anything to compare with, you might make a mistake that you would regret at a later point in time. So I guess I would just say, my thought would be to say, offer the opportunity for a second interview, do it at a delayed point in time. I think that presents the least risk for the district. Is there a motion? Somebody want to offer a motion, one way or the other, what to do?
I'll make a motion if no one else is choosing to do so. I move that we, I move that we offer a second interview to Sharon Irvine Hawkins at a later date to be determined. I'll let you catch up. After we have reposted the position and screened through first interviews with new candidates.
Support.
All right, we have a motion on the table by myself. It is supported by Mr. Centers. Do we have comments or questions on our motion?
Mrs. Burton?
Mrs. McDonald?
Can you reread the motion, please? Mrs. Bonnefield?
She's still writing. Huh? She's still writing.
Yeah, we really.
I just want to make sure I understand what we're voting on.
We're about to find out what kind of a secretary she really is.
And I don't do shorthand, so I'm writing it long. And so correct, let's, we'll go through it. And this is good, because then we'll correct it. Move that we offer a second interview to Mrs. Sharon Irvine Hawkins at a later date after we have reposted the position and finished the first round of interviews.
I think there was.
To be determined.
I said, "At a later date," comma, "to be determined."
To be determined.
At a later date, right here?
To be determined.
To.
TBD.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry. That's why we have.
That's all right. That's all left to write down. Can you read it again for us, please?
Okay. Move that we offer a second interview to Mrs. Sharon Irvine Hawkins at a later date to be determined after we have reposted the position and finished first interviews.
I believe I said first round interviews.
I'd like to still support that motion.
Okay.
Okay. Are there questions or comments on the motion as it stands? Mrs. McDonald?
I do. Maybe I misunderstood what Mr. Willmott indicated. But I was under the impression that his advisement was for us to complete the interview process next week.
That was not my recommendation.
Huh?
That was not my recommendation.
Okay, I'm sorry that I misunderstood you. Thank you, and I appreciate that clarification.
Got a problem.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Mrs. Jarvis?
Thank you. How soon will we start looking for additional first-round candidates?
And we would hope you would as well.
Yeah.
And as we, you know, converse with people, we'd like the flexibility to, if they have questions or concerns as to whether or not it's the right fit, we'd like the flexibility to perhaps have some sessions with one or two board members where there could be some informal discussion about whether this is the right fit for potential candidates along the way before we ever post the job. So, nobody gets any preference in terms of the job being posted in consideration, but at least a sense for, in their mind, is this the right place? And in your mind, is this the right type of candidate?
Mr. Wilmot, is December the typical month when those are...
I would think you'd want to, you know, put the posting out towards the end of the traditional school in-session period in December, sometime around the 16th, 17th, 18th of December, with a posting deadline perhaps at the end of January, so that you're ready then to move forward in early February. Yes, ma'am?
If we're putting out unofficial feelers and discussing with people that we may know, and certainly that you may know, is it possible to post it sooner, because they'll know it's coming?
You can post it anytime you want. The reality is, the majority of the applications are going to come in at the end of the posting period anyhow. And if you want to take advantage of the primary posting season, that January, early February timeframe is the key timeframe.
What I'm thinking is, if January and February is the main time for posting, and we put our post up a week or two ahead of time, then we might have people applying with us who would have applied somewhere else had they seen that other posting first.
Sure. You know, that's a possibility, and we can do that, you know, the first of December, if that's what the board wants, and still leave it up through the end of January, particularly given the traditional winter holidays. We can certainly do it that way.
I think you'd give us a little edge.
If that's the most preference, we can do it that way. Well, we can certainly talk about that as we go over the next several weeks and make a determination as to when's the best time to post. I think you're right. You have all the community input in terms of what they want. You don't have to redo that. You've got that search brochure, and we change some dates and repost it and see where we go from there. And so, that could be done at any point the board determines that they want.
Are there other questions or comments? Want to be sure, I want to rush anybody. All right, we have a motion made by myself, supported by Mr. Centers.
Let's just read the motion.
Okay. Move that we offer a second interview to Mrs. Sharon Irvine Hawkins at a later date to be determined after we have reposted the position and finished first round interviews. Motion was made by me, supported by Mr. Centers. No other questions, comments? No? Mrs. Bonnefield, you please take the roll.
Mrs., President Burton?
Yes.
Mr. Centers?
Yes.
Mrs. Jarvis?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Laura?
No.
Mrs. McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty. Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Are there next steps, closing comments? What would you like to add?
I think, you know, I think the board did a very diligent job over the course of the last two evenings in looking at four individuals who put themselves forward in a very professional manner, expressing interest in this position. The decision that you have to make is a really, really difficult one to make. You know, it's not just trying to look for the technical skills, but it's also those soft skills, those personal skills, that the candidate's going to be able to have to deliver. And as corny as it sounds, it's almost like watching the television program, The Bachelor or The Bachelorette, where you have to go through this process and look at this wide group and ultimately get down to the point where you've got but a single rose to give to somebody. And, you know, much like, much like that kind of a personal environment where an individual typically says, you know, I just knew that that was the right person, I suspect that you will find the same kind of thing with the individual when you get there. It's going to be more work, it's going to be more time, but it's time well-invested. The future is too important to risk in any way, and I think you just have to, you know, take a deep breath and swallow hard and go on and start the process again to make sure you get the right individual. You have our commitment, our support, to be there for you every step of the way.
I'd just like to thank, like Bill and the whole team, they've put an enormous amount of time into this. And they will obviously continue to put an enormous amount of time into this without complaint. So, we appreciate all the hard work.
You're more than welcome. Again, our commitment to this district is to make sure that you get a peak performer in your role as superintendent, and we'll spend as much time as we need to to make sure that you wind up with the person that you're convinced is the right individual.
Logistically, will you be getting back with our four candidates?
Yep, we'll do that yet tonight.
Okay, all righty. And I assume you'll be letting Ms. Irvine Hawkins know, too, that the motion that was passed?
Yep, absolutely.
All righty.
Good, I think we're done.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No.
All righty. Thank you very much for your time that you spent, and the two biggest and most important pieces to me have been the act of recruiting and the guidance through this process, because we recognize it as probably the most important decision that this group will make, and yet none of us have gone through this before.
Absolutely.
So, we're very, very happy to have the guidance of Michigan Leadership Institute, and we appreciate it.
We'll be back at it tomorrow.
And we also appreciate very much those who have attended. We have some folks in our audience that have attended all three evenings. So, congratulations and thank you, you made it through. And thank you to those who are watching from home and paying attention to this very, very important decision. We do appreciate your support. Mrs. Jarvis?
I think we certainly must thank Mrs. Oquest for putting up with us in this process and agreeing to stick it out until we find somebody to take the job.
Yes. Additionally, we would be remiss if we did not thank Mr. Winry also, who has fielded more of my phone calls than he probably ever cared to or anticipated over this process, making sure that we administratively have everything ironed out so that we could go through the process as smoothly as possible.
It is very appreciated. Thank you so much.
All righty. Any other comments or questions from the board? All right, that is the end of our agenda this evening. We are now adjourned. Thank you.[1613.48]